Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 30th at 7:02 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for August 8th, 2022. I think everybody got a chance to read them. I know some folks chimed in with edits. So Jim, Lisa, Pat, did you have any other edits you wanted to make?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of August 8th, 2022, as previously submitted. I all parties.
Motion by Lisa. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I abstain.
Yeah, okay, yep, yep, and padded points. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. So this is a time for anybody who wants to bring anything up for something that isn't already on the agenda for this evening. Is there anybody who wants to make any comments?
Yeah, I'm Carla Mar. So I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Hey Carla.
And I'm Robert Cholley Line. I'm here as an observer from the community party. I don't know. I signed it up for. There is something that I want. Okay, well, we got double coverage.
Um, okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'm moving close.
Seven.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. Uh, so we can move on to the first item on the agenda. That's to continue the review of special permit number 2021-4516 Lansing Meadows. Uh, as per the conditions of resolution number 2021-4516 adopted on December 13th, 2021. The planning board will review the progress of the Lansing Meadows development. Did you want to kick us off, Mike?
Yeah, I was, I was talking earlier, as per Village Code, the request to amend a special permit. The first decision the planning board has to make is whether the, uh, the change in the special permit is considered a minor change or a major change. If it's a minor change, um, then we can proceed with the proposal that Eric has given us. Um, if it's a major change, then we have to table it for the next meeting and have a public hearing. Uh, and the change, Eric, what is the only change you're making? Are you only changing? You're proposing to change when the foundation needs to be in for the final two buildings, correct?
Yeah, the only change, Mike, I'm requesting is condition and just be removed because we've got a commitment letter now. Uh, for the delivery date, which is the same as before.
And Mike, do you have access to, um, the special permit? Can you bring that up so everyone can see it?
Yes, give me one second, Mike.
What is this? Special permit. It should have been. I don't see. I'm confused as to what this is. I thought it was out of here. This is just. Number. I don't understand what this is. We'll find out. And he's pulling up the whole one. Yeah, I, I think.
It got to enable me to be able to use the screen.
Oh.
My Village.
I had it out too. Do you print some copies of it, Mike?
Yeah.
Just, just the conditions.
Just the conditions. I just can't read whatever's in that far away.
So Mike, while you're pulling it up, I can just go back. I mean, the, the original request I had from the August 8th or the July 26th meeting was to push the condition. And, and the other condition P out one year vote. And I think there was some, uh, quite a bit of discussion that they still want these completed next year and that I should try and find some other builders who could accomplish that. And doing so, we were able to bring in, again, we can address that in a second. So we're still looking to keep the deadline in place. It was in the original special permit, which would have been the end of October 2023.
Okay, so, so Eric, what you're doing, what I've got on the screen here is with the condition as deadline for completion of foundation work for phase two, building eight and 14. Uh, is scheduled, the, that completion was supposed to be for July 26th, 2022. You're asking to extend that out a year.
Well, I was asking to extend both that and P out one year to accommodate my builder.
So you're extending P out to 2024?
Well, that was my original request, but since then, since the last two meetings we've had, I've been able to find another local developer who's very well known and very efficient at what he does. It has made a commitment that he can get these things done by October 2023 and still keep that date in place with a crew that he has, but he is booked swamped until next spring. So he can begin the project in spring. And he has a crew that could complete it by October 2023. So the only thing that I am now asking the planning board for now is, you know, we will, we will stay with the original date of the October 2023. I'm asking the planning board to remove that deadline because it's come and gone. And he can't start the foundation some next spring, so it's somewhat irrelevant.
Okay.
Okay.
You, you're basically not asking to remove and you're asking to move that N out a year. If the planning, still, the planning board still wants a deadline for the foundation. I mean, they do have a right to do that. Am I correct, Natalie?
Yeah, or they can just decline their amendment request. If it's just to remove it. I don't think that fulfills the objection, objective of the board. To simply remove it because we've missed the timeframe. The special permit as it's written has a mechanism of how to handle a deadline that hasn't been met. And that is to establish an escrow account for the completion of the condition. Not to remove the condition.
So this is John Langy, and again, good to see everybody. So I've, I've been away from this project for quite some time. So, um, uh, what Eric has asked for, there's, there's a total of 22 conditions. He's asking formally to have removal of condition N relating to uh, the installation of that foundation uh, for those two buildings. And but he's also underscoring the fact that the ultimate completion of that, of the project uh, October 2023 would stay in place. Now, Mike, as I recall, my understanding was that that time period had been established as a sort of a checkpoint for the board to come back and look and see what the status of the project was at that time. And now Eric has come forward and I believe at a prior meeting, which I didn't tend, he explained, um, what the situation was, but happily he's come forward with a, with a signed, um, uh, letter from this builder who indicates he would be able to meet the ultimate completion date, which I, I would suspect is really what the board is looking to do. Get the project finished on time. The holdup is he was unable to meet the one condition, letter N. And therefore we, we can't meet that condition. However, we can meet the requirement that the project be finished. The idea of establishing an escrow account for a portion of the project that is private to the developer. Um, in my experience is unheard of. I, I took a look in the code to see if there was a provision for that. Um, and I didn't see anything in the code. I'm very familiar with requirement for, um, escrows for public portions of a project. And in fact, I think in this case, we've done that. Indeed, we signed an escrow, um, uh, agreement with the, with the village for portions of the public app, part of the project. And then I think that was, um, appropriate. In this case, what he's asking for is to focus on that final completion date of October 23rd. Um, or excuse me, October of 2023, which his builder says in writing, he could complete. So that's the request to, um, uh, put that into consideration and have that approved and which effectively would essentially remove condition and it has not been met and we understand that. But the putting in a escrow requirement on a private portion of the project would not seem to be appropriate in this instance.
Well, I will remind you though, I don't have the special permit in front of me to reference the number that there was also a landscape escrow put into place for the private portion of the property if these foundations were not finished. So that you've already signed an escrow for the private portion of the property with no objection previously.
Well, that, that escrow was really for the benefit of the public to screen the project is, was if I recall correctly. So in that sense, it was, it was public in that sense.
And so one of the things that I will say, John, is that, well, some of these conditions were potentially created as a checkpoint. Ultimately, they were created to make sure that Eric finishes this project. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. And so, um, there's also, Mike, can you bring that special permit back up there? Because there is also a provision in there about the establishment of additional escrows and conditions if these are not met. If Eric did decide that he wanted to request, can you pull that one piece up?
Can he make, can he make that bigger? Can you, can you enhance that so we can see N and P better or just N?
Actually, just give me about, if you could wait a few seconds, I'll make some copies here so you can have it in front of you. How's that?
Thank you. That would be great. I left my folder home.
And Mike, you're looking for, or, uh, actually, Michael, you're looking for condition Q, I think was one of the ones you were referencing.
I have a question though. Um, so we have in front of us this, this document that Eric submitted dated eight, or we received it eight 23, building permit. Special permit, special, I guess it's the special, I guess it is what we're talking about tonight. I'm, I'm real, this thing doesn't tell me anything.
Yeah, this is also the first time we're hearing that your request is to remove condition N. It was not included on your
there's no.
It's, it's not even listed as an amendment application.
Right.
But there's no description of the proposal as to what you're going to be asking the board to decide upon tonight.
So is, is that the document we're looking at? Is this thing where it's just basically he filled in the form with data? But no description of the proposal is, is that what we're talking about this evening?
I, I think maybe.
Amendment? Is this the request for a special permit amendment?
I think we should maybe wait for Mike to come back or be heard that, Lisa.
Okay, I'm happy to wait. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we think Mike worked with Eric, um, to get that document submitted.
That doesn't matter to me frankly.
While Mike is filling, while Mike is handing the, coming back to his yes, right. So, um, hang on one second, Lisa. Condition Q, the important part there is the planning board reserves the right to take such action as the board deems appropriate, including but not limited to. One of the conditions is requiring additional escrow accounts to be established and funded for the cost of complying with the special, with the special permit. And was not met. So that is one of the things that we are, are going to be discussing tonight. I know we have some other decisions to make about this, but that is one of the things to discuss tonight.
And then, and in so doing, I, I would just mention that because I think we actually discussed this at the time, the language for condition Q did provide for, for a clause that said, if there be no reasonable basis for the delay, and I believe Eric had addressed his delays at prior, prior meeting as well as, uh, tonight. So there was a provision to allow a developer to say, here's why I was unable to get this done by this time. And that certainly is, uh, is a, is a clause that you do see in, um, some of these conditions and similar projects.
And that's another thing that we can discuss is whether the board feels that that was a reasonable or not delay.
Okay, sure.
From, from what you're describing, John, that it, it seems to me that originally then, and really had no meat to it whatsoever. If it can just be taken out of the actual condition um, with no change whatsoever, for, that's the way I'm understanding it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're framing, I think that the current, recurrent request is for the board to look at today's circumstances and to consider Eric's um, explanation of, of why this condition was unable to be met by that date. And to take factor that into this request for an amendment for the special use permit. And then within the guidelines of, of condition Q, which does provide for the ability to provide a reasoning for what the delay was. Um, look to the ultimate deadline of, of next year as his request, and he's supporting that with his contractor, his builder's, um, written statement that he can complete it in that period of time.
Lisa?
I, I think part of my issue is this document, which is apparently the request for the special permit amendment doesn't tell us what he wants. It simply tells us it's a PDA. It's 3.2 acres. I know all this already. I've known it for, I don't know, 12, 15 years, but there's nothing here that tells me what Eric wants. And in terms of we could be arguing here all night about being reasonable basis, but I can't help but notice that in other situations in the village, I have seen about four times as many buildings go up in half the time. So I'm, I, of, of his putting his in, I really questioned perhaps the basis. I, you know, we don't want to get into a contest here about, well, when did you contract, uh, your contest people, but I think, um, I don't, I, I just need further explanation. I would like something in writing as to exactly what Mr. Getzman would like so that we could make a decision. And I don't feel that we have that. We have a lot of verbal. I don't like that. I have learned my lesson from this. And I think we need a, a comprehensive request for an amendment if that's what's going on here.
And quite frankly, when this amendment, when we got information about the amendments from Michael Scott, it differed from the request that's being made right now. So I'm not sure the discussions that you've had with the code officer, but it is not equating and the board had no prior notice that this was going to be the request being made.
I, I, maybe I can just step in. I mean, I was trying to follow the code and I talked to Mike about it. It's my understanding that in order to amend a special permit, I had to fill out this application, bring it forward in front of the board to have this discussion. So I thought that's what I did. I didn't realize I had to put additional information. For the board, last meeting, it also asked me to put in writing, you know, if I could get these things built to have a commitment from, from a, a builder could do that. So that's what I went out and did. I'm, I'm trying to.
But Eric, it doesn't tell us what you want. And you know what? One, one of the reasons that we stopped having some, um, of meetings as we did in the past where we meet as perhaps the chair with, with the code officer and the developers, because there can be misconceptions that come out of those meetings. And it's really best when the full board who has to make these decisions is clued in as to maybe what it is you want. But again, I would really like to see something in writing is exactly what you want and what you are committing to. Not what you have gotten from, and you said a signed letter. My particular letter from Mr. Lovejoy is not signed, but um, I'm assuming that somebody signed it at some point. But again, I, I just don't feel that this is a complete application for starters. And I, I don't know how much further we can go with this until we know exactly what you want in writing.
And, and I'd also like to add that with our discussion, Eric, we were talking about even if discussion was, was really worth it, we were talking about adding a year onto this foundation deadline. It wasn't talking about eliminating it that Mr. Langley is talking about.
But it doesn't matter. Okay, can't.
According to Mr. Langley, the deadlines mean nothing. There's no recourse available. You know.
I certainly didn't say that. Yeah, I certainly didn't characterize it that way.
Well, unless. I don't understand what, how anything matters.
Well, it, it, everything matters. Yeah. It, it all matters. But again, what, what you have, and I understand frustration and, you know, last year we talked about all this and the reality is that Eric's company was unable to accomplish that this one item that had to be done, but the ultimate completion day is in place. He has the right to make the request for an amendment. There is a provision in the conditions that he can, uh, explain the reason for his delay for you to consider. And that's where you're prepared to do that tonight. And we're happy to do that tonight. Um, I don't, I, I mean, we're on the agenda and, um, and I apologize because I didn't read the rest of what your agenda is if we're holding other people up, but I, I'm sure Eric would spend as much time with you as need be to explain how we'd like to finish the project.
But isn't, doesn't interpretation also of condition Q, um, ask the planning board to determine whether it's a reasonable basis?
Yeah, it does. It does say that. So you would have to, I mean, Eric, Eric's explained it. He can explain it again, what his basis was for the delay. Uh, but a re, the reasonable standard, uh, is yes, it's employed in there. And it's in your sole discretion to determine that.
Well, I think the first issue is that we don't have a valid amendment application. There is no description of the proposal given. There's a space on the first page of the application to list the proposal. That is the spot where it should be listed, what the amendment is going to be requested. It differs from what was discussed with Michael Scott. And this is the first at the board's hearing of it. Good point, Pat, is also not signed by Eric.
Oh, I have mine not in the, oh, in the number, oh, their landowner, landowner.
So, uh, I guess I would ask, Mike, I, I assume that you and Eric spoke about, uh, about the need for the application. Is that correct?
We discussed it, yes.
Okay. And then, so this was forwarded on to the planning board for tonight's meeting.
What he turned in to me was forwarded to the planning board as usual.
Okay. All right, just, um, just want to clarify that. I mean, I think if Eric had been advised, you know, that more information would be necessary for the planning board to consider this tonight, I'm sure he would have happily complied with that.
Oh, you know, I really have to take exception with that, I'm afraid. You, you know, Eric has been doing business with the village for a long time and he knows. I, I really don't put, it's not up to Mike Scott to police every single applicant. If we get, some common sense tells you, description of proposal tells you what to do.
Yeah. And so I, I, what I would say to, to Lisa's point is, and, and to, you know, to the point that you raised, John, is it's yes, we're asking for more information. What Eric provided was no information. The description of proposal section is blank.
Right. And we supplement it verbally at that right now? We could, Eric can tell you on the record.
Yeah, no, one of the things that I will say, and I think that we've, you know, very recently, even as, even recent as last meeting is like, we do not like to get information the day of the meeting. We actually have strict deadlines in the code about when materials have to be turned in for board review. So what I would suggest, unless somebody else wants to chime in, is that, um, Eric fills that out with the appropriate information for exactly what he's asking and we can put, hit this on the agenda for the next meeting.
When, when is your next meeting?
September 12th, September 12th.
Okay.
September 12th.
September 12th is the next meeting.
And the only, the only request I would make, and I understand if you can't honor it, is I, as you guys know, a lot of times I've done this with you before. I'm usually heading out to a meeting. Any given nights, somebody's covering my meeting tonight, but I actually have a town board meeting that night, but it starts at 7:30. Is there any ability to schedule his matter as a first item on your agenda?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can put it first on the agenda.
Okay. And I hate to ask you that, but it, I, I can't get out of, I've got, actually got three, I have three town board meetings that night.
No, that's.
Yeah.
We get those from folks all the time. I completely understand if everyone has other obligations too. So no, that's fine. We can, we can make it first on the agenda, um, and, and take it up then.
Okay. Okay. So let's just, let's just review. So, um, Eric, you're requesting that Eric, uh, provide additional information to the application for me. It's submitted. Um, you, you do have a copy of the builder's, uh, letter indicating he could complete the project within the original uh, timeframe as a, as a, as, um, uh, created last year. Um, and, um, even you do want him to provide more information about the reason for the delay per, uh, condition was, I believe it was Q. Um, so we can have that in the record for the next meeting.
Absolutely. And one of the things that I would also suggest is it would be great if we could get a copy of the, the commitment letter that's signed, um, by the contractor.
I, I get that. And you want the, the application where it says signature of landowner, you want it signed in that portion of it too. But I think, you know, I don't know, Eric, is that your signature there? Was this signature designation?
That's on the last page.
It's on the last page below your printed name. Yes, that's me. That's fine. So I'll really ask you. Yeah. So that was just some, that was just one of those things where you, you think you signed it in the right place and you didn't. And that's fine. I think we can, we can correct that. We, yeah, that, that's easy enough to fix. But you, you want the description of proposal, the layout, what it is that we're asking for.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
All right. And I, again, I'm sorry for the confusion. I do apologize. So I know, I know it can be frustrating for a board. I, I've been in your place before, so we will clarify all that for you.
As much information as you can provide us, Eric, so that we don't have to go all, go over all of it day of, whether, again, that's a description of what your proposal is and what your reasonable basis for, you know, not meeting the requirements is.
Okay.
Yeah, on the reasonable basis. Okay.
Lisa, or Lisa, or Pat, or Jim, any other comments on that?
No, no, good here.
Natalie or?
My only comment is that, you know, this was pointed out before, if, if Erica's, you know, wants to be diligent and has any questions to make sure the form or other submissions are done right, he can always check with the, uh, Mike Scott or the appropriate village representative to just say, here's what I'm putting down there to make whatever request is, is this is this sufficient? Do you guys need more or whatever? Clarify ahead of time. So we don't have what appears to be a form that's pretty much filled out and blank, the signatures and the property description and no account of what it is that's being asked for. I know my suggestion to, if there are any questions, you'll ask them of the village representatives. I will.
Okay. Um, then we will, um, see you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
And I think, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
And I think Mike's coming out, uh, to let somebody in the waiting room who was back in.
Awesome. Getting your exercise.
All right, Mike, you can go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for subdivision number 2022-4603. Um, Sean and Rachel Ryan, owners of 77 Graham Road, tax number, tax parcel number 46.1-1-6.24. Our proposed subdivide of their 8.875 acre lot. The proposed parcel two would be 20,043 square feet or 0.46 acres and would have 100 feet of frontage along Dart Drive. The existing parcel one would then contain the remaining 8.415 acres. Um, I know we had talked about this last time. We didn't have the appropriate app to, um, sign. Um, but I, my understanding is, Mike, you do have them now, but I think there's also some other information you wanted to share.
Yeah, I've got the, um, I've got the plat now and you might as well get the white elephant out of the room. Um, what I, uh, have found out from, uh, John Courtney, and I'll try to give you the Reader's Digest version of this is, uh, uh, the proposed lot right now would, would actually be for Dart Drive and, uh, to the east, you'll have six Dart Drive and to the west, you'll have two Dart Drive on the corner. Um, we found out that is six Dart Drive. Uh, the actual sewer does not run out to Dart Drive itself. It runs through the subdivided lots and into to Dart Drive and then on to Grant Road. Um, this is a situation that we're working on right now. I've spoken with, with Natalie, um, about what we could do legally for this. Um, it's really not a planning board issue as far as subdivision goes. Um, that can be taken care of as per business. Um, the other situation with the sewer, uh, is going to be handled separately. Um, and I know that the Ryan, you probably, or you, you, I'm sure you have questions that I will take care of after this subdivision, uh, is taken care of. Um, at this point, I don't really have any answers. We are trying to figure out how we're going to address this and how the village is going to, uh, react to the situation. Natalie, did you want to add anything to that at all?
No, then the fact that Mike and I have been in contact, I've been in contact with DPW. I believe we're going to have a meeting with DPW, Mike, in the May or later this week to kind of get a game plan on how we're going to address the issue with six Dart. But we just want to make the Ryans, Ryans aware once we became aware of the issue since it is affecting their property.
Yeah, I think Brett had a comment.
Yeah, just that, uh, I, I wasn't previously aware of this, but just from Mike's description, it sounds like something that would normally be handled with some kind of a private easement from one property owner to the other. No prohibition of that from the. No prohibition of that from the, um. From the, from the Tompkins County Health Department. Um, and that's the way I see it. In. I would say, in our type of terrain. In the, you know, where the villages have steep slopes, it's common maybe as many as ten to twenty percent of the lots have similar arrangements where there's sewer lines running across another property.
Yeah, I did check the, uh, clerk's office, if there are any previously recorded easements, obviously I don't have an abstract for either property, though. Based on my review, I, I didn't see any, um, I'm sure the Ryans have had their attorney review their abstract to see if there are any recorded easements affecting the parcel. And obviously, any easement would be given at the discretion of the property owner, it's not something that the village can require them to give.
Right, that, that's kind of was my point is, is that. You know, the, maybe the village can, can, can help solve the equation, but the, the property owner uh, is really ultimately the one that can make the decision. Uh, whether they accommodate the, the easement.
Okay. Um, so, like Mike said, I mean, um, you know, it, it sounds like that, you know, this isn't really something for the planning board, the request in front of us is to subdivide, um, you know, the lot, and I think that, you know, we were kind of ready to move forward last time, it was just a technicality with the, with the, um, the final plats, so. Um, does anybody have any other comments or questions they want to make?
Can I, uh?
Yeah, go ahead.
On, on the final plat, does this impact the final plat, does the final plat reflect this sewer thing, or does it need to?
I don't, I don't believe it need, I don't believe it needs to, it, it, it's just a base parcel itself of the dimensions.
Okay, and I'm assuming, because I haven't seen the final plat, but it just matches the map that we had previously in the larger final version.
That's correct, I checked that over.
Okay. Um, in that case, if people are comfortable with, um, moving forward, um, to the, um, subdivision approval, we can close the public hearing. I would just need a motion for that.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Jim. All in favor?
Bye.
Um, so then we can move on to the, and I'm gonna pull it up here, the.
I'll get it, Mike.
Okay.
Go, you can see it, okay?
Okay, um, so this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Final Plat Approval of Minor Subdivision Number Twenty Twenty-two dash forty-six oh three. Adopted on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This matter involves considerations of the following proposed action, Sean and Rachel Ryan, owners of seventy-seven Graham Road, tax parcel number forty-six point one dash one dash six point twenty-four. Are proposing to subdivide their eight point eight seven five acre lot, the proposed parcel two would be twenty thousand and forty-three square feet or point four six acres, and would have one hundred feet of frontage along Dart Drive. The existing parcel one would then contain the remaining eight point four one five acres. And on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in accordance with subsection D of section one twenty-five dash five of the Village of Lansing Code. Reviewed the sketch plan submitted with respect to this proposed action, and classified the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision. And the planning board finds this to be a type-two action for secret purposes. And on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, August eighth, twenty twenty-two, and August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The Village of Lansing Planning Board held a public hearing regarding this, regarding this proposed action, and thereafter thoroughly reviewed and analyzed the proposed final subdivision plat and accompanying materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action. Including information and materials related to environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review. All other information and materials rightfully before the board, and all issues raised during the public hearing and or otherwise raised in course of this board's deliberations. Uh, now therefore be it resolved as follows, based upon all of its foregoing review and action, it is hereby determined by the Village of Lansing Planning Board that approval of the proposed Ryan Minor Subdivision is granted or denied, subject to the conditions and requirements set below, um, it's a subdivision, so we, um. Just have the, just have number two, you know, the chairperson of the Village of Lansing Planning Board is hereby authorized and directed to sign the final plat for approved sub, minor subdivision in accordance with subsection G of section one twenty-five dash six, and subsection A of section one twenty-five dash fifteen of the Village of Lansing Code. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the minor subdivision.
I, I move we approve it.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Bye.
Hi. Um, great, so that's all set, um, I am out of town. Um, but I will be back in town tomorrow, and I will stop by the village offices, and I will sign both plaits. And, um, you can come in, I don't know, Mike, do, do you want them to email you, or can they just stop by to, to get it?
Um, as soon as you sign that, I'll email everyone, uh, Jamie and the Ryans, I'll email you, and you can go pick up both, uh, signed, um. Plats, so you can take it down to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then, and then we'll be, we'll be in contact, um. Uh, about the other situation, as soon as, uh, we, the village, uh, members meet.
Yeah, just, uh, on that front, we, we're not reaching out to the owner, and we're waiting on the village's response, we've contacted our attorney, so we're just in a holding period, so.
Do you mind if I ask who your attorney is, and if I can contact him if necessary?
Uh, Chuck Gutman.
Okay.
Great, uh, good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to open a public hearing for special permit number twenty twenty-two dash four six oh seven. Uh, Valerie Krybanov, representing V N K Development and Management Incorporated, is proposing to install a second curb cut. X-six Millcroft Way, tax parcel number forty-five point two dash one dash short forty-seven point two two four. As per Village Code Section one forty-five dash twenty A one, a special permit would be required. Um, do you want to kick us off with information about that, Mike?
Sure, I'm gonna show you the, uh, the site right here. The Krybanovs could not make it tonight. Uh, so I will try to explain his best, um, situation. This is a, uh. This is a house that, uh, has a mother-in-law apartment on it. Um, it would be considered a two-family home. Uh, as for our code, uh, anytime, doesn't matter whether it's two-family home or not, uh, anytime there's a second curb cut for a single lot. Uh, it needs to have a special permit, uh, approval. What they are approving, if you can see my arrow and everything, this is the original. Uh, this is coming with the houses, what they had figured that they would put in as their main driveway. This other area, which is actually west. Uh, they're looking to put a driveway in here for the actual, uh, small apartment that's on this building. Um, the driveway, the parking area is ten feet from the, as, as far as a parking setback, side yard setback from the property line. Of, uh, to Millcroft. Um, there is one concern that John and I spoke about. Uh, we spoke about today, as far as. If you remember, this Millcroft subdivision, there is a, uh. There's a somewhat of a sidewalk that goes across here. Uh, it hasn't really been, nothing's really been done to it, and a lot of the property owners have mowed over it, it's kind of hard to see in some areas. But this may actually develop into something with the possibility of the Beards Cluster Subdivision coming in. Uh, and extending the sidewalks through the Millcroft Division. So, what I'm going to recommend to the planning board is, if you do approve this. We will need to put some type of wording in, uh, the resolution. Uh, a condition that would say that the property owner is responsible for this area to make sure that this is only a two percent slope going this way. Because the sidewalk needs to only have a two percent slope. At this point, it's a little bit deeper than it needs to be, but when the sidewalk does go in. The property owner should be responsible for building that back up, so that the village can put the sidewalk in. Do, do, did I make myself clear on what has to happen there?
Yeah.
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 Okay. Other than that, this parking area does meet, uh, Village Code for setback.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
Any other question?
No, I was gonna say, so I, I did do a drive-by, just to see, to be sure, I, I understood what was going on there, and it's basically the driveway. Both these are, are there in gravel. So you're saying, Mike, that the gravel that's there now is too low?
Well, it, it has to be low at this point, because I think they have a covenant there that the parking or the driveways have to be paved. They're going to, so they're gonna end up coming up another, uh, good three to four inches on there.
Oh, okay, so, but, and then that will create what you said, the.
Yeah. Yeah, the height-wise, I'm not, I'm not as concerned as I am making sure that it it's not so steep coming from the drive, coming from Millcroft Way up the driveway. If you can get the proper slope for the actual sidewalk.
Okay.
So I think we should word something as a condition if you do grant this.
Okay. Well, it seems like a reasonable thing to do, obviously, if there's some, first of all. If this is for, I'm assuming it's more of a senior mother-in-law apartment, you don't want, want them walking across slippery things in the winter and all that good stuff, so it's, it's, it, it looks fine, I mean. As long as John has signed the number of curb cuts and all of that, I, I have no objections, certainly.
Yeah, see, the only, like I said, the only I guess issue that John did bring up was that two percent grade for that sidewalk.
Yeah, that's an important thing, so, yep.
Okay, um, Pat or Jim, any, any comments or questions about it?
Nope, um, no, sounds all right.
Okay. Okay, um, and I know Brent already kind of chimed in on it over some, over, over a couple emails, so. Um, well, you know, as we normally do, we will, uh, keep the, um, public hearing open for, um, at least another meeting, and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
There were no objections from any of the, but, did, there must have been a mailing, was there a mailing?
Yeah, there, there was proper mailing sent out, and I have not, and I have not heard anything back from anyone on it.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, but. Okay, so that goes to next time.
Yep. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is other business, uh, the one thing that we do have listed is the same thing that's always on here, continued discussion on code update. Um. There's a little bit of a discussion on that, um, from the trustee report that I'll give after that, but. Uh, Mike or Natalie, anything that you wanted to bring up or talk about as far as this item goes?
Believe it or not, I'm still working on the whole. Uh, each or subdivision, I'm, I'm going at it, and then comes up, so I'm still trying to work on it. Um, and just an update on the, uh, tree conservation. Um, I did send it in, uh, to the county, they had nothing.
No objection, it was perfect.
Didn't say a word.
I was gonna say.
They said goodbye. No negatives, no negatives.
Wow.
Okay. Um, Natalie, anything that you wanted to bring up about it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
We held back one, right, the, we have what? We held back one of the amendments. We wanted to support it, right?
Um, the one permit on subdivision.
Subdivision.
Wasn't it the subdivision one?
Yeah.
Yes. But we have that, um. And Mike, you and I talked about, once you get back, we really need to start looking at a residential portion to the trees. Origins and parking lot design perhaps, and I don't know, has, is there any, um, new news from any of the other municipalities with finalized short-term rental stuff? I know there was something about.
Not that I've seen, I know the Village of Dryden has talked about it.
Something about June, there was something that I thought. Carolyn Greenwald mentioned at one of the trustee meetings that there was going to be some sort of, I don't know, I have to cycle back and see, but. I think that's still on our list.
Well, what, what direction is the planning board looking to go with it, are we looking to do the short-term rentals, are we looking to do the solar?
Well, we have solar array.
Yeah, I, I just kind of want, I kind of want to get a direction that you guys want to go in, so that I can kind of, it's on.
Yeah. I think, um, we need to do the subdivision first, because we might have other situations coming along that that. We just needed to tighten up some of the language, as I recall.
Yeah, there was the semantics about the close of the public hearing that I haven't understood, and then you had mentioned there's other things.
Conditional approval, whether that meant yes conditions, no conditions, or just maybe that word wasn't, was a little misleading, I think, to some people. But not to us, so. I, I would like to start with that one, and then Mike and I can work on the, um, tree, residential tree, that doesn't need to be something. Okay. The solar array, you know, was almost done, I don't know, though, was that a moving target? Um. And you know.
Great if we could put some, when, you know, as, as, when we're done with the subdivision, and you and I can start talking about residential tree. Um, I think it would be great to just review what we had from solar. Um, and, you know. Get, get at least a, you know, a draft out there for everyone to review, kind of like we did, and see if we can move through that, but I think really, you know, the next hot type of thing really that we should focus on, you know, the tree conservation law was big. Uh, I think short-term rentals is in that same vein, but I think we need to tackle that.
Okay, at, at one point. There's, there's a gentleman, I can't remember his name offhand, who would come in and give us some information about, my God, I can't, not prepared, I can't remember the gentleman's name, Brent, you remember you and I. He had spoken to Ithaca. Uh, short-term rentals, he had a program that could help the village identify.
Yeah.
It's, it's not Bram, because thing, it's, is it, um, but does, does the county have something I thought too?
So I do have some, a lot of information about that, Mike, um. The town of Ithaca, uh, sought quotes from maybe four vendors, and I know that in on two or three of them, and I think you got in on a couple of them, uh. And so, um, the town has identified what one, oh, did I, am I still coming through?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna turn my, um, video off, because I think I'm having a little bandwidth struggle here, so I'm sorry about that, um. The town of Ithaca identified a vendor that they felt like gave them the best, uh. Bang for their buck, and as Mike was alluding to, this is a, an online service, or a uh, an electronic service where, instead of Mike having to be the guy who's trolling through the the internet every day, trying to figure out if somebody's renting that shouldn't, that doesn't have permission, or has rented more times than they're supposed to. This company, uh, if you, you know, for a fee, will do a daily sweep of the, um. They, up to ninety, uh, websites, and more if you, if you find one that you want. And so. As recently as the beginning of uh, or sometime in August, they've select, they've whittled it down and selected one of the vendors, and the Villa, the Village of Keoga Heights is also going to join in. So there's a little bit of, um. Benefit from multiple pricing, but at some point in time. You know, that's, that's getting way ahead of, ahead of ourselves for the Village of Lansing, but it's just good to know. Uh, you'll have the benefit, when the Village of Lansing will have the benefit, the trustees will have the benefit, if you do do, uh, develop a short-term rental law. That you'll be able to find out from the town of Ithaca and the Village of Keoga Heights, how this vendor is working out, and, uh, you know, I anticipate they can do some things that we can't imagine, or we don't already know. And so we're gonna be quite, uh.
Can't think of.
Please.
How many there are.
Results we get, and so anyway, um, there, there's some technology developing that will help the village or help Mike, so that, you know. Chasing around, trying to find people on the internet is a, a big time crush, so. Anyway, that's.
Can, can this organization, though, help us to identify now, like how many we might have in the village?
Yeah, I mean, s- some of the issues the planning board we had talked about before was identifying them, um. How are you going to handle them?
Yes.
And then the monitoring, and I think this group can handle the identifying and the monitoring part of it. Um, and what, what Brent said, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, in a way we are, because we don't even know how we're going to handle them yet, and that's what you guys are going to figure out. Um, you know, we discussed it some, but we never really hammered down on it.
Right.
Uh, which is something that if, if that's the direction we want to go, then I can get this stuff lined up.
Well, it's a matter of how.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure.
You know, what are our goals with this, as you know, how far we wanna go with it? Um, you know, I think that the last time we brought it up, you know, we each had some. Sort of like, I'm worried about neighborhoods being destroyed and other people are worried about, uh, we all had some sort of issues. Mm-hmm, that, so we probably should just have a, a discussion about some of that, and then we can kind of, our objectives for the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, at least, when, when I get back, I'll, um, we'll, we'll set something up where we can go over just a couple of things and we'll. Um, we'll find some time on the agenda to, to, uh, um, you know. I know that we've got some big things coming up on the agenda, uh, you know, obviously Eric's gonna be back at the next meeting. The beers might be at the next meeting, I always say that, but, um, that's gonna be, you know, um, that's gonna be quite a few, you know. Or quite a bit of discussion still too, I'm sure, so. Um, but, well, yeah, I think we, we need to carve out some time to, to talk about some of these things, we were doing that for a little while and maybe. Kinda moving into the second half of the year or the, or the last quarter, however you wanna look at it, um, we should spend some time focusing there.
Well, we've made some good progress, I mean, so.
Yeah.
Box and trees and things, so kind of keep the momentum going if we can, I think, would be great.
Yeah, absolutely, well, yeah, we'll get together, uh, like I said, I'll be back tomorrow, maybe, maybe next week we can get together.
Good.
Yeah, um, I do have, uh, you know, the, um, trustee report, but was there anything else anybody wanted to bring up, um, another business?
Um, I just noticed that, um, Aldi is having their grand opening this Thursday, I believe, yeah.
I just issued them a temporary certificate.
Nice.
Yeah, though the, the store looks good, it's very nice in there.
Okay. Oh, I know, actually, I do have a question, but it does relate to, um. When, when you, we talk about temporary certificates of occupancy versus the final. And whether it's an Aldi or Lansing Meadows or whatever. What, I'm, I'm not sure I'm really clear on that, and maybe you could, maybe now's not the time to get into that, but. I, I understand temporary, but what does that mean? Why, why is it temporary? Why is this not the final one, for example?
It's, it's up to my, my discretion whether I want to issue a temporary or not.
Okay.
Okay, and I cannot issue a temporary un- unless. All of these life-saving devices are, like, if the smoke touches are working or something like that. Or means of egress are blocked or anything like that, any life safety items, I could not issue it a temporary. If there are other issues that are really beyond someone's means, for example, Lansing Meadows, let's say the. The lawn area, and it was November, you know, I mean. And they, you know, I'll just.
Put in the grass in November?
So, so a temporary with situation would be similar to a resolution, there would be conditions.
Okay.
And then I can determine, it's suggested up to six months, but I can determine if it's. Uh, three months or one month or. But it's by no means that anything that, like I said, if there's a life safety issue, I don't even look at it.
Right, or there's some state.
So in, in the case of all these, they have a few things on the outside and some information they have to give us, like some asphalt on the sewer. Um, a couple of drains, they need to divert to different directions. There's no sense in holding up the whole store just for things that I can hold them, you know, I'm giving them three months to get it done.
Okay, and then if at the end of three months they haven't complied, then you can.
I can pull it if I.
If you have to.
And then place could shut down.
Okay, literally shut down.
Cause they would have no.
Okay. I've just often wondered kind of how that works exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, so next item on the agenda is the, is the, uh, trustee report, um. It was a, it was a quick meeting, there, I, I'm gonna need Natalie to stop on one thing, just because she knows more about it than me, but. Um, they had a public hearing to the proposed updates to the, uh, Greenway Plan, um, there were no comments there. They did set public hearings for a proposed local law F, which is the, um, tree conservation section. And also proposed local law G, which is the, um, amendment to the, um, code for the special permit, so those things that we've launched along. They set both of those public hearings for September nineteenth, and that's their next meeting, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so they did that, I will jump out of order for the next thing and say that, um, the, um. The state did, or the, uh, governor did extend the, uh, the, um, teleconferencing or remote meeting law through September twelfth. So that covers one more meeting if people need to, uh, do things remotely, um, before. And, and so when the, when the state, um, exception ends, that's when the village. Local law kicks in, or the village section that the, uh, trustees passed kicks in, so, um. That worked out well for me, because I'm clearly not there with the rest of you, um. And then so the, uh, only other thing that they discussed was, um, during the, I think it was during the. I don't remember if it was the mayor's comments or the general discussion, but they talked about, um, the safe streets for all resolution. And Natalie, can you fill folks in on that just a little bit?
Safe streets for all, so it is a program of, uh, various municipalities, town of Ithaca, city of Ithaca. I think Keuga Heights, town of Lansing, I think, Dryden Town. Um, a few others, where we're gonna have a study done to determine. Uh, the issues with the roadways and, and how to make them safer, and the payment. That was authorized is just for the study to be done, and then we submit it to this Safe All For Streets Grant Program. To then get money to effectuate those recommendations.
Safe streets for all, yes, I think there's.
It's the new federal, uh, transportation bill and, um. Condition that to be able to be eligible for applying for a grant for any kind of highway improvement. You have to have prepared this safety study. And instead of each of the municipalities hiring individual, uh, consulting firms to do their own. Uh, the city offered to be lead agency and hire a single, um. Consultant for basically the urbanized area of the Tompkins County, which is the, kind of the urban, the. Uh, basic metro Ithaca area, and so, um. The, the application at this point is to, um, for a, a consultant. Where the Department of Transportation through the federal, uh, transportation bill would. Fund eighty percent of it, so the twenty percent remaining gets divided up by. Um, population basis for amongst the, uh, the municipalities who are participating, so. The table and us, a, a di- amount determined, which I, I was a very reasonable number if I'm. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, with like less than ten thousand dollars.
Five hundred or something like, five hundred to six thousand, somewhere around that area.
Yeah, it was around six thousand-ish.
Yep.
Captain six or something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, that sounds like a good idea.
Yep, it was mostly the mayor had been sitting in on all these meetings and he was really excited about the project, so, sounds like a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the only other thing that was brought up during the, um, meeting was, I know that, um. At the last meeting, Ronnie had brought up the, the kind of encampments that, um, the homeless encampments that, um, had been found and had been removed. There was one that was reported near the billboard, I think, and I think that's the billboard kind of behind, um, Big Lots, was that the area, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that was reported to the sheriff's office, um. But yeah, so. I don't, I don't know if they, I don't know if it was how much it was investigated, but it was reported to the sheriffs, it was a report that somebody saw and they reported to the sheriff's office, so. Uh, and then they adjourned at seven fifty-six P M, so four minutes, um, before us tonight, no, um.
No.
So that's the end of the trustee report, there is one other thing that I wanted to mention before, um, I asked other people, and that is that Lorraine is here again tonight. Um, Lorraine was here a couple of meetings ago, um, she expect, expressed interest in joining the planning board. And so what I would like to do, I know that we have quite a few things probably on the next agenda, but I think it would be great if, um. Mike, we could get her added to the next agenda for, uh, I know that we usually, um, do kind of a little Q and A with the, with the. Um, current board members and, um, potential, um, members of the board, so if we could add that onto the next agenda, that would be great. As long as you're free, Lorraine, it's September twelfth. She's nodding her head yes, so.
I'm good, I'm good, yeah, and I'll come in person.
Oh, good, I was gonna say, that would be so nice.
Yeah.
It's really quite nice to be back in person, I will say, I, and, uh, who knows with the world gonna be sick by morning. It's almost worth it just to not, I don't know, change the scenery, you know, and I can't, I can't say how nice it is. Yeah, really is.
Okay, um, that was the last thing I had, um, Jim, did you have anything that you wanted to bring up?
Um, I do not have anything to bring up.
I have something to bring up, though.
Go ahead.
The next person to do, cover the trustee meetings.
I think I'm, I think I'm online, right?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, I did look it up, I don't know if you had your chart with you, Mike.
I do.
I was saying, but, yeah, but you're off the hook on this cutting, as usual. There's only one, there's only one.
You have your, Lisa?
What?
You have the chart in front of you, cause I think on November, but.
I don't, but I can, I can send you a note.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send, I'll send, um, I'll send it out to everybody.
Actually, yeah, just send the whole sheet out and then, if we have to change it, we will.
Yeah, and I'll update it too, cause I'm sure we need to push it back out of, you know, a few months, as much as it pains me, you know, we're kinda moving forward the, the last half of the year, so. Um, okay.
Nice to add a new person to it, maybe you shouldn't be too hasty there.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, anything else, Lisa?
No, that was all.
Okay, anything from you, Pat?
Uh, that was the one I had.
Oh, perfect, okay, um, Brent, any, anything you wanted to add in quick? Okay, Mike?
Um, just a update, I did have contacts from, uh, Keuga Medical, uh, there, they have awarded the. Uh, contract to, uh, Hainer Hoyt for doing their project in the mall. Um, as you know, Aldi's is gonna be done, V A clinic's gonna be shortly behind it, and, and A D C is gonna be, they're moving along also. So I'm hoping things slow down, that we can focus on some of the other thing.
Did we ever, um, really connect with the other mall people? With some of the issues that were outstanding, Misses Gavin and, uh, Ken.
Not, not yet, we haven't, I didn't have the deadline scheduled.
And we haven't heard.
John, I think. I think that there were some of the issues were, are being, um, talked about, the drainage issues. I know John was able to do whatever portion of the work that was in the village right away, and he's been talking to them about. Uh, the work that they need to do around the ring road and, uh, by the back trail and some of that kind of stuff. So there's, there's some ongoing communication with, uh, somebody new at the mall, not new person, but. Person in a different role, Mike?
Yeah, uh, Beth is now, or, um, Gina is moved, has moved down. Uh, and, and now Beth is, has come in to take her over her position, so we need to try to mold her frankly.
Bring her up right from the beginning.
Okay, uh, anything else, Mike?
Um, no, nothing that you'd be interested in.
Oh, when you say.
And Natalie, any, any last things?
No.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, I, I was here this whole time, I just wanna make sure, yes, did, did you say you, with. Jumping back to Eric and that letter from the contractor, cause I'm, I'm actually looking at two screens, so I can look at the material and also participate in this. Um, I think, did you say you have a copy that has a signature from the contractor on it, or I think we asked Eric for that? What's that? I didn't, I didn't hear.
We requested one, it doesn't have a signature on it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I was looking at it, I noticed that, I couldn't remember, somebody said you'd gotten it just recently, or we had asked for it, and I thought we had, that's. Cause as more I think about it, it's odd that it has no signature, okay, that's it, I don't wanna haunt anybody up.
Okay, um, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn, um, the meeting of. August thirtieth, planning board meeting.
Motion by Jim?
No, second.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Alright.
Great, well, thanks, everybody. At eight oh six P M.